All meeting order, if everyone please stand. Scout, forward, march. Please join us in the pleasurable leadings to move all head toward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God is merciful, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and whatever.
Scout oath.
I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to face this outlaw of other people at all times, keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and always true.
Scout scout. Scout socks.
I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to face this outlaw of other people at all times, and to obey law and the head of the law.
Chief, scouts dismissed. Burgess, here. Gordon, here. Myers, here. Here, Washington. Williams, here. Alright, we've got your food, our comments, our question comments, so if you're interested in there, we speak of either three minutes to comment on topics of their choice on agenda items only, I'm sorry, topics on agenda items only. We speak of allow one opportunity to. Is there anyone ahead anything, question or comments? So if you say you may enter.
Judy Cast, here at New Stock Village. Um, I'm assuming that, uh, accounts payable will cover what I have to ask. And that is, for quite some time now, nobody has mentioned, or nothing has been said, or put out in paper about where we are with our lives. We still are not caught up with them, and I'd like to know where we stand with them, and how long is it gonna take? That's it.
That's it, alright. Um, I can see that they have been working on the just about every night. In fact, I come in here a lot of times, we're still here working. There was a few items that they were waiting on as for some initial responses. What's that?
One item.
One, one item is left open. Uh, once that issue gets resolved, we should have the budget come through the board. Uh, again, you're, you're right, we're behind on budgets, but in the last year, we've completed two budgets, so we're working on the third budget. Uh, so, uh, if you, if you look at time wise, we've had a lot of damage. So, uh, as soon as we finish this, I think we have another six month budget, uh, that has to be completed after this one. So, um, they're coming right along, we're hoping to have it done by the end of December. They, there was a few open issues, they've worked off from January, it went down to one open issue. Uh, and again, once we get that resolved, they'll come through the board. So that's what we're at currently.
Rose Langston, just something minor, on the minutes for January twenty eighth, under public comments. I don't know if I made the mistake or what, but it was to, um, regarding the village attorney for the assistant, recent Oya Amer, and I thought I had said human relations for the diversity dinner.
I'll check that, but I heard much. I'll check some officers.
Okay, that's all I might have.
I was watching the seven two, but I'll go check.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here I am, seeing none. Move to item number three, reports of officers, serving the mayor's report. And I will start with a proclamation for the Boy Scouts of America, so if you'd like to come forward.
Alright, proclamation recognizing, uh, the month of February as Boy Scouts of America Month. Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America has been at the forefront of instilling the timeless values of leadership, achievement, patriotism, community service, character, and environmental stewardship in youth since its founding in nineteen ten. And, whereas, this national youth movement has made serving others through its value-based program its mission. And, whereas, the Boy Scouts of America is committed to helping millions of youths succeed by providing the support, friendship, and mentoring necessary to live a happy and fulfillment, fulfilling life. And, whereas, there are more than five hundred and twenty-five community organizations that make scouting available for more than fourteen thousand youth members in our state who participate in the scouting program as a means of character building, citizenship training, and personal fitness. Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America celebrate the anniversary of the founding of the scouting movement during the month of February, and therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the board of trustees of the Village of Stock Village that February two thousand, two thousand fourteen be proclaimed as Boy Scouts of America Month throughout the Village of Stock Village, and urge all citizens to recognize this observance dated this eleventh day of February two thousand fourteen. David A. Hayes, Mayor.
Are you happy? Thank you very much. Alright. The question team on your time. Full you to the next thing I have, we'll have a new collection report for the month of November, and some would have moved back here, several in November. Property taxes, twelve thousand six hundred eleven dollars and twenty-one cents. Other taxes, two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight, uh, dollars and twenty-nine cents. Licenses and permits, eight thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents. Fees and services, two hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Transfers, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred ninety dollars and forty-four cents. And miscellaneous, two hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. For the month of November of one million, five hundred five thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and eighteen cents. For the month of December, property taxes, thirty-four thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Other taxes, two hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Licenses and permits, six thousand sixty-five dollars a unit. Fees and services, one hundred ninety thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars and five cents. Grants, eight thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Transfers, one million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. And miscellaneous of fourteen thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. For total for the month of December of two million, two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And ask the, uh, project director to be able to make sure that all the trustees will keep a copy, um, of the collective report. Alright. Next is, uh, we have a proclamation, in fact trustee, working, I'm gonna read it from the Human Relations Commission. Uh, that's trustee Williams to read it for me tonight, the proclamation for African American Month.
Whereas, in the century since African Americans first arrived on our shores, they have known the bitterness of slavery and oppression, the hope of progress, and the triumph of the American dream. African American history is an essential thread of the American narrative that traces our nation's enduring struggle to perfect itself. And, whereas, we see the greatness of America and those who have risen above injustice and enriched our society, greatness reflected in the resolve of Jackie Robinson, the intellect of W. E. B. Du Bois, and the talent of Louis Armstrong. We also gain a deeper appreciation from the African American experience in the writings of James Folman, as well as the music of Duke Ellington and countless others. And, whereas, African Americans reflect a proud legacy of courage and dedication that has helped to guide our nation's success and prosperity. Visionary leaders like Frederick Douglass, Thurgood Marshall, and Martin Luther King Junior possessed clarity of purpose and were instrumental in exposing and addressing the issues that threatened our founding principles. The battle for freedom, equality, and opportunity was fought on the front lines by strong figures such as Harriet Tubman and Daniel L. Hanner, as well as many other everyday heroes who helped to lead the nation to a more hopeful and just society. And, whereas, we recall these remarkable individuals, we also recognize Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, who in nineteen fifteen recognized the need for our country to gain a more complete and informed understanding of our past. Dr. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History and established the first Negro History Week. And, whereas, through the pioneering efforts of Dr. Woodson, the hard work of the association, this observance officially became Black History Month in nineteen seventy-six, when President Gerald Ford spoke in regards, urging Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout history. And, whereas, each February is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, took a stance against prejudice to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And, whereas, during the month of February, all Americans are encouraged to reflect upon the cast successes and challenges of African Americans, and look to the future to continue to improve society that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. And, whereas, the mayor and the board of trustees do hereby further acknowledge that promoting diversity, understanding in opportunity, we will continue our efforts to build society where every person of every race can realize the promise of America. Now therefore, I, David A. Hayes, Mayor of Stock Village, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand fourteen as African American History Month, and in recognition of the important urges, urges of all citizens of the Village of Stock Village to recognize the contributions of African Americans in not only our community, but in our country's history. Dated this eleventh of February two thousand fourteen.
Would I like to, uh, make sure that, uh, so we have here, Illinois Black Caucus Foundation Scholarship Program, this is brought to our attention, so, uh, we're gonna pass this over to the village clerk, she'll have all the information, so if you're looking for a scholarship, um, she has information, and there's a, a list of what the applicants must, must do. I'm glad I'm looking for a scholarship. The other thing here is we have tonight the Human Relations Commission, which will make sure that the village board is aware that the Human Relations Commission now has a new chairperson. And the chairperson is Chairman Commissioner Steve Blum. And then, the rest of the board remains as vice chair, which is Frank Williams, secretary Jeff Davis, treasurer Steve Schumpert. And then, that remains the others are just commissioners, so, we should worry about that. And last thing I have on my list is that this Thursday, you may see film crews around Stock Village. Uh, there is a Showtime original show called Shameless. They are going to be filming on the corner on about thirty in Torrance, and they're leaving both Lindwood and in Stock Village, so, uh, you may see some film crews, you may see some famous actors, uh, in Stock Village, so, but that's not our time. They just, they said they're not budgeted. So, with that said, move to village clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Election news. Voter registration for the March eighteenth primary election ends February eighteen. New law states that any seventeen-year-old that will turn eighteen by November fourth, two thousand fourteen, can register to vote and vote in the March eighteenth primary. For those of important election dates, offices up for election, current directory of all local, state, and county and elected officials, and the referendum that will appear on the March eighteenth ballot, visit www.sockvillage.org. For more information on the upcoming twenty fourteen primary, check your voter registration, please visit www.cookcounty.clerk, excuse me, clerk.com. Voter registration was held at Blue Trail High School on Monday, February tenth. Over one hundred students registered, and due to the new law, many students were able to register at seventeen years old. Over forty students were from Stock Village, and an overwhelming amount of students were excited about the opportunity to serve as election judges. I hope they did call. The village hall will be closed on Monday, February seventeenth, in observance of President's Day. I would like to thank the department heads and others for the divided updates from the Stock Village email alerts. The response to the email alerts is very positive. Please encourage others to subscribe by visiting www.sockvillage.org and click on Get Access Today. After subscribing, you will be sent an email to confirm your subscription. If you're, if you encounter any issues signing up, check your spam filter or contact me for resolution. Finally, I would like to personally acknowledge a little bit of Stock, Stock Village African American history. Congratulations to trustee Rosie Williams, the first African American Stock Village trustee. Trustee Williams was first elected in two thousand and five, and is now serving her third term. Congratulations also to trustee Darren Burgess, first African American male trustee. Trustee Burgess was first appointed in two thousand and six, and is now also serving his second full term. One other thing I was just handed, school district one sixty-eight is also having a Black History celebration on Friday, February twenty-first, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Doors open at five, five P. M. at Rickover Junior High. Come and join Community Consolidated School District one sixty-eight for a night of family, food, and fun as we celebrate the contribution of African Americans, both past and present, with performances from Strasburg Choir, Rickover Junior High School Drama Team and Choir. Special guests to appear, Mr. Tommy Ford, Cosar Martin, actor and impressionist, Mr. Anthony Brady from Las Vegas, and Miss Shirley Falls, songwriter and producer. Please come with your appetite, concessions will be available, entry is free, invite your friends and family. And anybody who has seen the Strasburg and Rickover Flyers, it's something that you have to see. So, we're looking forward to this event, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, we look forward.
Thank you, move to the village attorney, attorney Matt.
Uh, just one quick update, uh, the state recently approved the village's construction plan and contractor for the water improvements project, and, uh, construction should begin within the next sixty days. Uh, that's all I have to report this time.
Thank you very much. Move to reports, reports from trustees and board commissions, serve the Parks and Rights Committee, trustee Passan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to report the basketball program, we had to cancel one of the days because of the snow. Makeup will be on the twenty-second, we'll be playing in the morning and in the afternoon, so if anybody wants to come by and see some games, uh, that game will be made up at that time. I also have in the math table, I have a flyer with, uh, programs that I'd like to get going in twenty fourteen. And we would need cooperation of the public to help us with it, and also some, um, questionnaire of what you'd like to see, so if we fill those out, drop those off to either me or here at the village hall, uh, during business hours, that'd be appreciated. Also, on February twenty-sixth, from nine A. M. to one P. M., at Community Center, we will be having the Animal Vets Nation meeting again. Uh, they were very impressed with it last time, we had good turnout, and we hope to have it again as Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, from nine to one P. M., at Community Center. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee DeWitt Nation, many trusty board.
Thank you, Mayor, and the village board, I just want to report, uh, this past Sunday, uh, we had a wonderful, uh, committee meeting. Uh, a couple things that we were discussing is having a community-wide, or a community garage sale. We wanted to tool them. One that's gonna be in June, and the other one will probably be in August. Uh, the one in August, we're gonna try to work with Parks and Rights, and have it, uh, behind the village hall, and have it in co- cooperating with the corn and dog roast as well. So, we'll have, uh, some activities with that as well. Details will be following later on. Uh, beautification committee is looking for more volunteers and members. Uh, we always meet every month, the second Sunday of each month, and that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee. Most orders reviewed, committee, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple items tonight. First of all, uh, changing my date, uh, Thursday. Is that, uh, changing the date from, uh, Thursday to the, to, to this Thursday on my ordinance review? We have a couple of ordinance that we must look at before I get into the ports for a review this weekend. So, I'm asking my members, uh, present, uh, Thursday at seven P. M. here at village hall to review a couple of ordinance on, uh, number of liquor license here in town, uh, liquor license himself. So, I'm changing the date on that. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for the time.
Thank you, trustee. Uh, intergovernmental relations committee, trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to say, it's, everything that I was going to say is considered, and you guys have a chance to go ahead of me as far as with the Black History and, uh, the function that's gonna be at, uh, Rickover Junior High. I've attended those twice, I just wanted to reiterate and let everyone know, and let the parents know. Even if you're not, don't have children in the school district, you should come out. It's a very learning experience to come out and see, uh, uh, what they do, what the children do, what type of, uh, performance that's, that's there, it's very, it's very good for the village, and I think for y'all, uh, black or white should come out and enjoy that evening because it is fun-filled and it's Black fighting. Uh, also, um, as regards to the, uh, scholarship program, all that information is on the website, in Stock Village Government website, and also it'll be on the, uh, Stock Village website too. Uh, those qualifications that it takes to, uh, get this particular, uh, scholarship, uh, uh, you should check it out, you should read it, and you should look at it and, uh, apply for that. Also, um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, for the proclamation, uh, it's, I just, I don't know, maybe it's me, maybe I'm old school, but, uh, I'm always, uh, with Black History Month, not African American History Month, but, you know, that's just me. But anyway, this is fine proclamation, I appreciate that, that, that was my, my, thank you.
Thank you, trustee, and just, you know, I, I was always, I guess I'm old school, I thought it was Black History Month, but I guess under President Obama, he changed it to African American, so.
Heard me.
I think it's.
I don't know, I knew, but I mean, it's just something that I've grown up with all of my life, uh, 'cause at one time it was, you know, things were changed, and I just, you know, I, it's just something that I'm not used to hearing anymore, but.
It's the third, third time, I think, I remember, I did the, um, the study about it. It's like the third time it's been changed the name, uh, since it's started.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. And, and on that note, um, both your picture and your picture is on the new, it's on the Stock Village, the official Stock Village Facebook page, we did a cover recognizing our elected officials, um, celebrating, um, Black History Month or African American Month. Uh, so, if you get a chance to go out there and look down on the Stock Village Illinois, the officials of Stock Village Illinois website, or Facebook page, and you'll see our elected officials recognized. Thank you very much. Move to public relations and community outreach partnership committee, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just a reminder, we are still looking for donations for Student Government Day, which will be the fourth Tuesday of March, and we're also looking for judges. So, if anybody would like to participate in the judging of the essays, please do myself, or the village clerk. Um, and basically, since I see some new faces in the audience, just to kind of go over what that entails, is when we pick up the essays from Rickover, they have the, were the student's name and contact information in the top right corner. I take those and I cut the name off, and I give that piece of paper a number, I number the essay itself, and then I separate them for the judges. So when the judges read them, they have no idea who the teacher was, who the student was, nothing like that. It's a completely blind judging, and then, usually there's about twenty-five essays to the pack for the judges. The judges are then asked to narrow down to five from their pack, and then we meet as a group to reread all of the essays. The essays are then given a score from one to ten, and then, once all the essays have been read by all the judges, we tally the scores, and that's how we choose who's the mayor, the village clerk, the trustees, and so on. So if anybody would like to be participating in that, please, like I said, let myself know, or the village clerk, and if anybody would like to donate, please let us know as well. And then, that includes my report on public relations, and the community outreach partnership committee. We did have a meeting scheduled for last week that we had to cancel. And, um, I will be reaching out to the interested parties of that committee to try to come up with another game plan of when we can meet, and we can have police chief and the mayor available at that time to discuss some questions that the committee has. And, um, we'll make sure to let everybody know.
Give me enough notice, I don't expect you to have a session during that night.
Yes, yes.
Alright, move to reports of departments, committees, and commissions. Fire Department, nine-one-one commission chief stock ready.
Thank you, Mayor, board. Over the past two weeks, fire department responded with twenty-one calls. Four car accidents, five fire alarms, three medical assists, bloods, two COs, two gas stations, one on fire, two car fires, and one assist from out of town. Take a moment here, village. Thank the public for folks that have taken the time to wait, clean the snow, wait for fire hydrants, and also, the biggest thing is keeping an eye on their neighbors. Hopefully, we only got another week to do this cold winter, 'cause I've had enough. And I got a bunch of firemen, so they had to off this cold winter, and that is it.
Again, hats off, our thanks to the fire department, you're a member, which is the head of the minute, uh, for working the fire station overnight, so we can have warmest station during this cold, cold season. Move to police department chief, Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'd just like to put out a base, you know, basically, uh, some of the most recent stats since, uh, January twenty-eighth through, uh, today's date. We've, uh, police department has responded to seven hundred forty-five calls for service, a hundred and eighty-two which were traffic, thirty domestic calls, twenty motor assist, thirty-seven parking violations, eighty-nine, uh, other calls for service, and, uh, forty-eight ambulance assists. For the same time period, it was also sixty-eight adult and juvenile arrests, and that included seven arrests for narcotics. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, report that some of our end-of-the-year statistics are in. Uh, I'd like to, you know, kind of, uh, proudly report that, uh, some of the crimes are down. We haven't, uh, counted all the crime statistics. Uh, burglaries are down, uh, about seventy-five less burglaries than there were last year. Also, in, uh, in twenty-twelve, it was approximately twenty thousand calls for service. To give, uh, give the folks an idea of what the police department, uh, how much this guy's running. Twenty thirteen, the calls for service were eighteen thousand, five hundred and five, so, uh, calls for service have been reduced, uh, by a small amount, which is good for us. Uh, the thing that goes along with that though, is that our arrests are up. Twenty twelve arrests were twelve hundred and ninety-three, arrests for twenty thirteen were fifteen hundred and forty-seven. So our arrest is up two hundred and fifty-four for next year. And then, credit goes to, to, to working police officers out there doing, uh, upstanding and outstanding job. Uh, I'd also like to report that, uh, because of a set, uh, unfortunate set of circumstances, uh, we're, uh, temporarily gonna disband the Comptoir Area Gang Enforcement Unit. Unit was started in, uh, August of twenty thirteen by myself. Unit was started in, uh, August of twenty thirteen by myself and Chief Beers in Linwood. Um, and we decided to, uh, assign one man per department to conduct this, uh, combined area gang enforcement. Um, I assigned Brad Wild, one of our, uh, most active officers, and, uh, Linwood assigned officer by the name of Craig Barnes, who was also one of their top producers. These guys went out from August to the summer, like I said, uh, because of the economic situation in Linwood, and, uh, both of us are, uh, suffering at this time. We're going to, uh, temporarily disband the units. We assign those officers back to patrol. However, uh, there is a credit, where credit is due. So with that in mind, I'd like to announce that, uh, the end-of-year statistics, uh, myself and, uh, Chief Beers compiled the other day, uh, the combined area gang enforcement unit made, uh, twenty misdemeanor arrests, thirty-six felony arrests. Uh, they captured one fugitive from justice. Those, uh, six search warrants were conducted with, and, uh, during those search warrants, there were seven handgun seeds, approximately four and a half pounds of cannabis, one ounce of cocaine, two ounces of heroin, and approximately six thousand dollars of cash, which will eventually be distributed into Salt Village and Linwood. So, uh, I'd like to thank both of those officers personally for finding outstanding jobs with their gun. And, uh, hopefully, uh, at the end of springtime, we'll be able to get the unit back in, uh, back in service again. Thank you. And, uh, somewhere down there, we will be inviting both of the officers to attend the party and so we can present them with, uh, some certificates. And, uh, just to cut things short, I know there's a lot of concerns over snow parking over the last month. We're trying to work very closely with Kevin Waller from Public Works. There was over two hundred parking tickets, uh, tickets were written, uh, during the past month for the snowfall. Uh, the other day, we sent out a specialized unit to, uh, accompany Public Works to remove vehicles that have been on the street and snowed in for about three weeks. So, uh, the latest, uh, stats on that are that we towed eight vehicles that were snowed in. The street should be clear. If any, uh, any of the citizens, if you have a vehicle that may, by some slim chance, still be, uh, still stuck in your block, please go to the police department, we'll be there to take care of it. Uh, one last thing, another positive note for the police department, uh, early, uh, I should say late last year, uh, November, I applied for several grants for the, uh, police department, one for respirators, another one for ballistic, uh, plate carriers. Uh, I'm happy to announce that, uh, the Department of Homeland Security and ILEAS, which is the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, has granted and delivered to us a respirator for every police officer and a ballistic plate carrier for every officer. That concludes my report. And if I could interrupt, that was at all cost to the village.
Thank you very much, chief. Great job. Move to Public Works Department, Mr. Waters.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give you a little bit of information on this year so far, um, salt supplies. We, uh, this year, we cut our salt supply back to about five hundred tons, which is six hundred tons, seven hundred tons, average, half a year. Uh, we currently have received all of our five hundred ton salt. Uh, we are currently sitting on roughly about four hundred ton in our salt home, and we still can collect up to another hundred ton. Hopefully, we won't need any more of it, or any of what we currently have. Um, puddles is, uh, definitely becoming an issue as the snow starts to melt. Um, we have a couple of streets that are pretty bad off. And certain sections of town, as long as the ice is out of the hole, we can add the patch to it, otherwise it does us no good to put, throw money away, because it's very expensive material. Um, they will be out the next few days with the weather warming up a little bit, and, uh, hopefully we'll take care of most of the complaints. Uh, residents, if you do have a hole for your house somewhere, or you know one in Salt Village, please let us take the call and, uh, leave an address, uh, for a street where we can, uh, take care of that. Snow removal, uh, all of our equipment is definitely aged. Uh, we are working on it day-to-day, uh, but at this point right now, everything is running, so, um, that's a good sign. Um, we also have some complaints around town and some of our on-doing for water leaks, uh, due to the weather conditions and the cold temperatures, uh, which we started this back in November, the temperature started, and we haven't had a break since. So, uh, slowly but surely, we're getting warmer days, we're getting some warmer conditions hopefully, and, uh, we are working on some of those leaks. Uh, we will have two of them planned this week, and, uh, hopefully the other two that we currently have outstanding will be the following week, if the weather holds out. Uh, snow procedures, uh, just like, uh, chief police and co-reformers have been helping us out a lot, um, within two snowmaches, uh, you have two inches of snow on the street, please move your cars. Um, that means two inches of snow until it's been completed, the storm is completed. Not just after we drive by and you put your car out there, because, uh, we may not be done yet and we have to do more passes. So please, when the storm is over, the snow has completely stopped, and the last pass we will make will be one pass on the middle of the salt, after they make usually three passes on every street, just to clear them. And finally, uh, just, uh, let you know, day-to-day procedures, we have some, some little issues that we have to deal with, uh, in the public grounds department. And, uh, if you notice, one door is closed, we had heater, uh, freeze up in the ceiling and it's currently working right now. We have another little small leak that we're taking care of. Um, and we also have some minor areas in the, uh, community center and police department that we're currently working on. So, uh, we are very busy and we do thank the police department for all their help recently with all the cars removed and the co-reformers, uh, for all the tickets they rented and gotten the cars removed. Thank you, that's my board.
Thank you, sir. Move to administrative services, Mr. Zippy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. Village Hall will be closed Monday, the seventeenth, for President's Day. And, uh, Towns Cap has a different owner now, it's level sports bar, but they will be closed for a couple of weeks. They're going to be remodeling, um, changing some carpeting and floors and stuff like that. And today I sent out about four letters to businesses that are in violation of the sign ordinance, uh, they're running flashing lights, um, they got temporary signs all over the windows and they can only cover up twenty-five percent of the windows. So as I see them, I'm going to start sending out letters and I indicated to them, if they don't correct the problem, I'm going to receive tickets. Um, the cell tower issue has been resolved in the back there for permitting, um, they received the permit to go ahead with the storage facility and the generator, so that's all been cleared up now. And that concludes my report.
Can we get an update on Martin Park there?
Um, no, I haven't heard nothing from him. Um, I can give him a call tomorrow. Um, a couple of weeks ago, he said, um, the deal should have been closed up by Thursday, and then when I talked to him the following week, it still wasn't. Um, I know that it's not going to be around the clock, it's going to be a totally different restaurant, and, um, they're looking for a liquor license to serve, um, that, you know, liquor with dinnos. Um, that's all I'm heard of.
All right. If you guys okay, go ahead and start the, the trustee backs up, so you know it's one minute.
Sure.
All right, appreciate it. Move to finance department, uh, finance director, Mr. Roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any important, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move to Salt Village Homeland Security Agency team, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, over the last two weeks, the work services responded to twenty-one calls, which consists of five car accidents, five fire alarms, two CO alarms, two gas leaks, four school patrols, two car fires, and one smoke. And also, I'll be setting out the back table, this, uh, six of brochures from FEMA, and that's, uh, things that assist the prepared residents. Uh, we've got several emergency supply lists, preparing makes sense for older Americans, uh, preparing makes sense, get ready now. Uh, every business should have a plan and preparing, preparing emergencies for people with disabilities. Uh, I'll set these on the back table, this is a handball, this is, uh, this is my, this is.
Thank you very much. Okay. Move to housing commission, Commissioner Holcomb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything I have to report as the housing committee meeting is this Thursday at seven PM here in the Village Hall?
All right, thank you very much. Uh, before we go to the next, I just want everyone to know, trustee Washington, they called, said she was going to be here tonight, uh, but she passed off her report as her village clerk to read it, so we'll read her report first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Human Relations Commission would like to report that they have a full commission. They are very excited about their recent Human Relations, uh, diversity dinner, and their next event will be, they are going to host a diversity seminar sometime in March or April, and they're currently seeking some leaders in the field to help with that, namely Joseph Martin from Diversity, Inc. There will be more on that program as, um, details arise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Now we go back to senior committee, Mr. Luntz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Little township senior committee luncheon, this is next Wednesday, February nineteenth. That's a more, uh, Italian style with Frank Ross, uh, that went, went off of. Their deadline is tomorrow, Wednesday, February twelfth. They continue their senior exercise Fridays, ten to eleven. They have suburban legal assistance, the fourth Tuesday by appointment. They have blood pressure screening on the third Wednesday by appointment. They do have assistant for health insurance, that's the Illinois Senior Insurance Program Council available. They have their senior wheels available over within the township. Their telephone number is seven oh eight seven five four eight two hundred. And, uh, if you need any additional information on the senior events, it's seven oh eight seven five four nine four hundred, extension two four four for additional information or service. The events of the senior committee sponsors, we continue with our free monthly blood pressure screening for all village resident and village employees. In the senior center office, the next one is on Monday, March third, from one to one forty-five, and every first Monday. Our paperback book exchange continues, and, uh, we want to thank a lot of our residents for their donation of the paperback books. Our next blood pressure and monthly senior movie, The Heat, is on Monday, March tenth, which is close sponsored by McConaughey Library. On, uh, March tenth, we're having a presentation on Tai Chi, and that will be eleven thirty, followed by a luncheon, which requires reservation. You can call the library, seven oh eight seven five seven four seven seven one. And this month, uh, the Friday senior social activity will be, um, February fourteenth and also February twenty-eighth, that's usually from eleven to four. There is a flyer listed of activities and movies and a literature rep. We also have a senior center survey available for those who are interested in other things. The Fun Club meets every second and fourth Sunday at three PM. Sunshineers next meeting is on Monday, February seventeenth, at seven PM. The Laishers have canceled their meetings for the month, for this month, that's February twelfth and twenty-sixth. Surroundings group continue to be every Wednesday from eight to eleven AM. South Village Bluegrass continues every Sunday from six to ten PM. The Golden Agers will meet next Wednesday, March nineteenth, at the Jones Memorial Community Center, two two oh East Fifteenth Street, Chicago Heights. They have a ten o'clock social hour, ten thirty meeting, and lunch at eleven thirty. The cost of lunch is five dollars. You do need reservation, the number is seven oh eight seven five seven five three nine five. Annual dues for the membership for the club is five dollars for the year. Just a reminder, the Cook County First installment tax bill is due March fourth. If not, a late penalty of one point five percent per month will apply. Just a reminder for qualified seniors to be sure to complete and return their annual senior or phrase tax exemption, application in order to receive their exemption on the second installment. There's a blood drive this coming Sunday, February sixteenth, from nine AM to one PM at New York Hall, St. James Catholic Church. Uh, I was announced, uh, told that there would be no tax preparation at McConaughey Public Library, however, they will have tax form available. The next senior committee meeting will be this Thursday, February fifteenth, five PM. The committee's sixth chili cookout is scheduled for Saturday, March twenty-ninth, and we are looking for chili chef. Thank you. This ends my report.
Thank you very much for that number six, to set agenda. Sorry, trustees have any problems with anything on the set agenda. Would that say that's motion to approve?
So.
Motion second. Go to, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Fiers.
Yes.
Washington. Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Move time number seven, new business, uh, under A, motion to approve a council table and disbursements for January twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, through February eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
The motion is, uh, second. Are there any questions or comments? There are none, go to, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Fiers.
Yes.
Washington. Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Move time number eight, miscellaneous comments from the mayor or trustees. We'll start with trustee Williams. Trustee Myers.
Just, uh, one thing.
Sure.
I noticed, uh, there was activity down at the Russian data, so moving in some, uh, pry walls and, uh, different type of material. Uh, about, uh, three forty-five, some today, there are two fans there, I don't name anything, but they, they have started working on their, already.
All right. I'll try to.
I just want to let everybody know, uh, think happy, happy thoughts, uh, summer is coming. Anyway, summer is, uh, summer is coming. Yeah, very. Summer's coming, and as always, we are going to be having another annual Fourth of July or about, uh, parade again, uh, myself and, uh, Mr. Myers always, uh, put that on, so let the Boy Scouts know, let your friends and family know, we haven't, uh, uh, a date yet, but we are going to have that again. Uh, so, I was just throwing that out there, because there, usually it's real warm when that really happens, so think, think, think positive thoughts. Think, think, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Faskin. Trustee Burgess.
Yes, I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, um, Kevin, the, the, uh, delineators that are on Tony's app, when I see a lot of work.
I'm going to do that.
Yeah. Is that going to cost us something? Do we, I mean, it's going to come out, I mean, no mitigation fund, I'm sure.
We have some places, actually, we're spending.
Twenty-two missing?
No, we have twenty.
We can't turn that back to add up?
Um, down to here.
Oh.
They were all there to go, so, and they're showing their attitude.
Police department, you get a phone. Okay.
Would you call for any help?
No, I mean, it's quite, it's outside of the road. Um, second thing, Mr. Mayor, um, I'd just like to recognize our, our, our special events tonight. Um, I just wanted to let everyone know, um, first of all, who the scout master is. Will she please stand up? A lot of people don't know who the scout master is. She's done a great job. I'm sure these are the, um, scout parents, um, they've done a great job over the years, and I've been involved with the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts, and, um, I think we have, we have two as in one, uh, Eagle Scout.
Two.
I know one is here.
We have one and possibly one.
And possibly a second. Okay, who's a possible?
My son.
Okay, same in the family. I just wanted to say, this is the largest, except for the, uh, memorial service, this is the largest time I've seen the Boy Scouts come out, and I see we have a couple of Cub Scouts, and, uh, there were some girls here, I don't know if they're Brownies or...
Uh, they were the sisters of the Boy Scouts.
Sisters. Okay. Do we have a, uh, Girl Scout troop?
Um, there is a Girl Scout troop, but I haven't, I haven't told you.
Okay. All right, did, now, do we also have a person representing the Boy Scouts as far as the international? Is there anyone here for that? There we go, that's what I thought. Yes, we do have that, uh, troop, and I appreciate, you know, these, these men and women, these parents, they, they donate their time. I used to be a scout master years and years ago, so I know what it takes to, to do that, to get these, um, young men and young ladies, um, involved in this, um, it's, it really helps out, um, something that they can look forward to. Even at my age, I can look back and say, you know, I was part of that, and I just wanted to, uh, pre, and let everyone of the scouts know that, um, you guys are well appreciative, and, um, I see a lot of merit badges. I'm not going to go on my ass afterwards, but I see a lot of merit badges, and that's great, because it takes a lot to get those merit badges. a lot to get those merit badges. And also, I'd like to thank the parents of the Scouts, uh, because I know what it has to go, what they have to go through also. So, on behalf of myself, and I hopefully, and I know the board, thank you guys for coming out. Uh, thank you guys for getting involved. And being involved, and this is what I'm saying to the Scout leaders, for being involved for the kids out here in South Village. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I see. I thought, I saw your thunder for a report that you saw back in the beginning. Again, I'd like to, like, say, bring this thing, but thank you for coming out tonight, and for giving us the opportunity to pass or to put the proclamation out tonight. Uh, if we could, though, can we get the names, especially the, the leaders that are here today, the commanders, uh, the ones from corporate, can we get your names for the record, so we can make sure you're part of the, for the record, too? So, uh, before you leave, would you just see the village department, please, make sure she has your spelling correct. We really appreciate that. Uh, the next thing I have is, uh, as we passed, uh, we did pass the, on say, pass, we had two proclamations tonight, both for the Boy Scouts and one for the African-American, uh, History Month. Uh, but we're gonna go a step further, and I'm proud to say that on February twenty-fifth, that we will be honoring one of South Village's very own, uh, Nathan Griffin, uh, for his accomplishments in the Negro Baseball League. Uh, not too many people know that, uh, he played on that, on the best, on the baseball league, so, uh, we wanted to have a special presentation for him here in two weeks. So it's kind of something that we add on to, uh, with the proclamation date, um, given tonight, whether or not something again in two weeks. So, uh, come back, Boy Scouts, and, uh, see what we're gonna be doing in two weeks. I already mentioned, Trustee Washington, you said that she wasn't gonna be here tonight. Um, the village engineer, he didn't email me, he was on vacation today, and asked for if he could not attend, so I wanted to add him to the, take the vacation, don't come in tonight. And it's, it's been talked about, two, after two inches of snow, please don't park in the streets after two inches of snow, because, uh, there's nothing I can do for you once your car is cold. Uh, how many phone calls I get, people's cars are cold, they're calling me. Uh, they see me in the store. There's nothing I can do. After two inches of snow, your car will be ticketed, and if it's still there, it will be towed. And the Department has been doing exactly what they're, they've been requesting to do. Um, so I just want to make sure I pass that on. Uh, we, there's a lot going on during November. We know that this next Friday is Valentine's Day, so gentlemen, don't forget about your wives and your sweethearts. Um, hopefully I won't forget, and I'm a child reader. And then, uh, that's something I've already mentioned also, is President's Day. So, um, make sure that, uh, bring that up also. With that said, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all favoritists, aye?
Aye.
And adjourn, thank you very much.